Good evening and welcome to the Quarry Valley Unified Union School District Board Meeting. It's December nineteenth. If you would please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first order of business would be the approval of the agenda. A motion would be in order. Discussion. We're going to have, I'd like to do an executive session at the beginning here when the parties join. Are they with us?
They'll be joining at six fourteen.
The academic records or suspension or discipline of students. So when that party joins us, if Chris will let us know and wherever we are in the meeting, if we could just move to that, if everyone's okay with that, rather than making the family kind of hang out for the whole meeting.
I'll make the motion with the adjustment.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. General public comment. Is there any general public that would like to speak to an agenda, an issue not on the agenda? We have no public with us here in the conference room. All right, seeing that, and we'll move on to all business. Is there any old business to come before the board? New business, town meeting updates.
So I had met with the clerks from Quarry Valley last week. The question that they had asked for the board to consider is about the co-mingling of ballots. I know that, you know, whether or not we would, last year, you know, we were, you know, to do that, but wanted to know if the board would consider co-mingling ballots again this year just because, you know, trying to have someone drive it down, you know, from each polling place to, down to Poltonee can be a bit problematic. So they just had to ask me if I would just bring this before the board for consideration.
Sure.
You're talking about eliminate the co-mingling.
Eliminate co-mingling, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mike to eliminate the co-mingling of Quarry Valley ballots. Any discussion?
So does that just mean that the clerks then each count their own for their own towns and then just send the numbers in, or how does that work?
JP's select board count clerks submit. And so our clerk is Betsy, so she would be the final receiver, just like we've done actually the last few years. Otherwise, prior to that, when we did it in Poltonee, they didn't start counting until all the ballots arrived. So, and I understand that originally it was so, nobody knew, but, I mean, is anybody's feelings really hurt if what the tally is, I mean, the tally from everything else is by community. It's a little odd that we can't, don't want to see them personally. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Tom? Let's head shake. All right. Motion passes unanimously.
So the other point of discussion would be whether or not we want to offer a, just strictly in-person this year, a hybrid model. I know that voting is returned to the floor, which the hybrid model would be problematic if that's more for, you know, a meeting, but we, you know, this is going to be an in-person vote or, you know, in-person meeting. So I just want to know if we wanted to try to continue with a hybrid option or not.
So I know our community for our town meeting is meeting only in-person. I don't think we're offering the hybrid model. We're going back to the high school and voting for the floor. I mean, technically, we only-
It's not the school board. It doesn't, you don't, we don't vote the ballot from the floor anyway, do you?
No.
So it's just an informational meeting.
Right, that's all we are.
We want to have the hybrid option for that or just make it in-person, so.
Or some by preference.
Yeah, what, what?
We allow the chair, the treasurer and the clerk on the floor.
Yes, for the, that part and the moderator, but not for the budget, so.
Yeah. Um, what school are we at for sure?
We'll be at West Rutland Town Hall.
Okay.
So Poltonee, Poltonee has had a ballot measure to have their select board meetings, their town, not town meeting day, but select board meetings in hybrid, to keep it hybrid. So I don't know if that, I mean, I don't know that that necessarily applies to our informational meeting or not since it's, we're not the select boards of, we're not the select board. So, but just sort of FYI, that was on our ballot and was passed. So the select board has to accommodate that apparently, so.
So they're having their annual meeting as hybrid?
Those are always hybrid meetings.
Oh, interesting.
Are supposed to be offered in a hybrid fashion.
Oh. Sarah?
I was gonna say, you know, given that this is primarily an informational meeting, it feels like hybrid is extending, extending some visibility, you know, into the community in ways that folks who might not be able to come in person. So even, even though it sounds like not a lot of people actually take us up on that, I mean, as evidenced by, you know, these monthly meetings, the sort of act of extending that invitation feels welcoming. And so, you know, for an invitation, for just an informational meeting where it feels like, you know, the form might lend itself to a hybrid mode more than say a voting session, right? If it's not too problematic to, in terms of sort of the technical setup to offer the hybrid option, to me, it feels like a sort of a revolting.
Except we're not going to be in one of our buildings, so we will have to have someone schlep everything because we'll be in the town hall for West Rutland. So that will be the responsibility of someone. And then there is, because we do vote three things from the floor, there is that, I don't know how we're gonna, how we would do that with the voting.
It's an agenda item. It's an agenda item?
Right.
So it just comes up as an agenda item?
No, but I mean, like, if you have so many people-
I'd be opposed to the hybrid as the moderator. I like the in-person.
And I also think that we will have recorded our budgets and everything for each district and beyond PEG TV also, right?
Right. We'll do the same we've done the past few years. We'll have a presentation recorded on PEG TV about a week prior to annual meeting start airing, and then we'll also show that same presentation at the annual meeting as well.
Okay.
And we'll also post a link to that presentation on our websites, so people will be able to find it.
I'll make a motion that we do it as an in-person only informational meeting.
Mike makes a motion that the Quarry Valley informational meeting be in-person only, West Rutland Town Hall. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Yeah, nay.
So, motion fails.
It looks like Rebecca had to hear us.
Yeah, she did. So that's why the motion failed. It's a tie.
I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah. One, two, three. No, Rebecca, Kristen, Sarah. So.
Three, three?
Three, three.
What about Jessica?
There's four.
Oh, Jessica, did you vote? Jessica didn't, Jessica?
Hi, sorry. No, I'm against it.
You're against in-person only or you're against having hybrid?
Uh, in-person only.
So you want to be hybrid? Okay.
Yes.
So do we want to be hybrid because board members don't want to attend the meeting?
No, I plan on attending. I just, I just agree with Sarah's point that I think, you know, it's, you know, if they can't do it at the town hall in West Rutland technology-wise, then we can't do it. But at least we could find that out. We have time to find that out. And if we can't do it, I think it is, it opens it up to a wider audience. But if it's not technically possible, then we can't do it. That's all there is to it.
I agree with Kristen. And also time to make a plan for moderating, right? Hybrid is a little bit more, can be a little bit more work, but with an advanced plan going in for how we handle, you know, folks who are online wanting to make comments and things like that, which we already have a little bit of a roadmap for in these meetings, I think. Then, you know, we have a plan for how to handle that, so hopefully it will be, you know, run smoothly.
We have a whiteboard here. They do not have one there, so there's no, it's going to be more difficult unless the technical team can put up a TV of some sort as a monitor for that because they don't have that resource in the town hall upstairs.
We have to work with Greg on getting a projector and a screen and all these items down there for this, for the, you know, I, so, and I think I'll also have to reach out to the state just to discuss about, you know, how they handle voting. Obviously, you know, people can't vote virtually.
Because you have to check in by your, by your clerk. So I'm not sure how we're checking people in virtually.
I can have more updates in January for you about this, so.
I don't have a problem with broadcasting it if that's the, if that's the issue. You know, the broadcasting part is not the problem. It would be the interaction between the floor and, in the voting part that is more of a complex issue.
Yeah. You know, finding out if there's precedent for that, I think, would be great. So if there's a way to gather some of that information and write by-
Precedent for what?
For doing voting in a hybrid.
Well, you can't vote in a hybrid. They've already stated that. You can't vote in a-
That's the point.
Okay, got it.
I mean, they understand, you know, our discussions were the hybrid has brought, you know, some great interaction, you know, it's allowed more individuals to attend, but they're not looking to shift the way votes, voting's to occur, so. So that would just be someone, you know, initially maybe someone who attends virtually just understands that they can't vote, that they're there merely just to ask a question or just to view, so. And maybe that's something with moderator would just have to state at the beginning of the meeting just to remind individuals that are attending and we can, you know, communicate that, so.
All right, with that in mind, you still want to go forward and see if hybrid is an option? Yes?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's worth exploring the option, you know, and if there's a way to find out, you know, what practices other folks are using that could be a guide so that we don't have to reinvent the wheel, right, from the, from the beginning. And I mean, I'm happy to do some of that with research.
Well, it's not reinventing. I mean, it's what the state says that we're doing. So there's no will to reinvent.
Right.
So people can come, just like you are now. They could ask a question. They're not voting. That's, they're merely observing. So my question, my question is, is that, is that still the will of the group to have, to set everything up over there? Because they're technically not interactive in the meeting. I mean, they're not, they're not voting, so they're just observers. And, and-
And that could cause problems too, because if people come thinking that they're going to be able to vote and find out they can't, that could be an issue.
So I guess at this point, we'll have, have Chris look and see what it entails in terms of equipment that would need to be moved over there and set up because that will require having someone go and set up and have someone break it down, so.
And monitor during the process.
And monitor. So we will figure that out in January. And, but will our draft warning be out before then?
We'll be absorbing it at that meeting.
Yes.
Okay. I was gonna say, because we'll have to have it on there and say one way or the other.
If we will. I think we have to say the time and place. I'm not sure we have to say if it's hybrid or not.
Oh, we did before.
Right, but it's-
I think we put the link, yeah.
Yeah, because you have to put the link on it, yeah. Okay. So Chris will come back with that information at the January meeting. All right, approval of minutes, November twenty-first, meeting minute. Motion would be in order. Are they with us yet?
I'm in the call.
No one wants to approve the minutes?
I'll do it.
They just entered.
Okay.
I'm gonna leave the call, Chris, so it doesn't echo.
Motion by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. At this time, motion will be in order to move into executive session for the academic records or suspension or discipline of students.
I'll make the motion at sixty, sixty-eighteen.
Mike makes the motion at six eighteen. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we're going to- All right, we're out of the executive session at six forty-two, and we will move on to the approval of warrants. You receive warrants via GRC SU email. Any questions should be directed to Lewis. A motion will be in order for the approval of warrants.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mike. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Hi, Tom said hi.
Okay. Any opposed? They can't hear us, right? Mm-hmm. All right, motion passes unanimously. Superintendent's report.
Okay. Uh, sorry, I think it was muted, so I-
Oh.
I apologize. I got too many things.
Go figure, just to-
Okay. Here, and I was just gonna say to you people, like, this is why, if you're gonna be hybrid, you gotta participate.
That was us. That was me.
All right. Approval of warrants. Warrants are sent to you via GRC SU email. Any questions should be directed to Lewis. Comments or concerns. Motion will be in order for the approval of warrants.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Superintendent's report.
Uh, thanks. Not a lot to report. I know that it's been a pretty quick turnaround since our last meeting. You know, this time of year really is busy with getting our, you know, our budgets in line and starting to prepare for our annual meeting and town reports and things on those lines. So I do want to publicly, just, you know, state that our strategic plan, our final meeting has been moved to March ninth. It's been pushed back one month. So that, the information will be sent out after the first of the year, so we'll return for break, but just so people understand. And the reason, the rationale behind that was give the writing team a little more time to do some work. We felt we didn't want to necessarily rush through this, particularly with, you know, losing early month of December and then January being pretty quick. So we wanted to have January, February to work on this and also get an opportunity for some feedback from, from board, from community members. So we will, our goal is to have a draft ready for the whole team on March ninth for review. And then, if things go well, then in April, we'll, March or April, we'll present that to the SU board for approval. So I just wanted to highlight that, so.
Okay. Any questions for Chris?
And I just have, so we, just around PCB, you know, sampling. We have had PCB samplings in two of our schools. We are waiting results. So we, right now, it's at Poltonee Elementary and at Proctor High School. So once we have the results, I will meet with the building administrators. We'll meet with representatives from the DEC, the Department of Health, and the AOE. And then we will be, you know, giving that information out to, you know, community members about what the findings were, what the next steps will be. So hopefully, we'll have some results shortly for Poltonee Elementary and for Proctor High School. So, thanks.
Great, thank you. Principals' reports you received in your packets for information only. Are there any questions or comments about the principal reports? All right, hearing none. We'll move on to finance. Lewis, monthly financials.
Okay, so monthly financials were in the packet. If there's questions, I'll take those. If not, I'll move on to announced tuition rate. So each year, we have to set a tuition rate for our elementary school and our high schools. We have, we set one rate for all of our, all of our schools. So that we'd have a K-six rate and a seven-twelve rate. I have provided a sheet in the packet which shows what our current rate is, as well as some other schools in our SU, as well as in our area, and in the state average, which is used for independent schools and out-of-state schools. And then, so I also provide my recommended rate, which is approximately a three percent increase. We don't have a lot of elementary student tuitions, that tuition in. We do get some from IRA that attend West Rutland, but that's pretty much the majority of them. And then at the secondary level, we do, we do see a lot of secondary students that tuition in to both, mainly Poltonee and West Rutland. IRA students going to West Rutland and then Wells, Middletown, and Polat students going to Poltonee. So my recommendation is for elementary rate for FY twenty-four, fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. And for the secondary rate, eighteen thousand dollars. Both of those are approximately a three percent increase.
Okay. A motion would be in order to approve the recommended FY twenty-four announced tuition recommendations.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Kristen. Discussion. Questions? Concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
So next is the Jace replacement. So earlier this year, we went out to bid. West Rutland has two sets of heating controls, otherwise known as a Jace. I'm not sure what that's short for, but there's, so there's two. One was replaced, I believe it was last year, and Jay, fill me in if I have anything incorrect. And then there's one other one that's old and needs to be replaced. So it, one's a sort of a backup in case the other one fails. So we did go out to bid, and we have been looking at this project for, I believe, it's been about two years. We've tried to get federal funding through the Efficiency Vermont programs on two separate rounds and are being told that it wouldn't qualify. So we went out to bid.
What did you say, for efficiency? Is that what you-
Efficiency Vermont.
Okay.
They had that state money, or the federal money that came down to them. So we tried to get funding through that, but they said this would not qualify. So we received two bids, one from Control Technologies, which is the current vendor that manages the system at West Rutland. And the other one was from Alliance, who also manages systems in our SU for other schools. Because we only received two bids, we had to go to the state to get a waiver. And we did get approval on that waiver today, so we are okay to move forward with whatever the board decides. The bids from Control Technologies, they were both in the packet. The bid for Control Technologies was a hundred and thirteen thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. And the bid for Alliance was a hundred and twenty-five thousand and two hundred dollars. Jay, is there anything that I missed or misstated that you'd like to fill in?
Um, yes, yeah. I couldn't have told you what a Jace was three years ago. So the Jace is what allows our furnace to talk to all the unit vents throughout the building. There are two, as Louis said. We replaced one two years ago. It controls only a portion of the building. This one is the one that controls the majority of the building. It also is something that if it fails, we no longer have control over the heat in our classrooms. So it is a computer system, lots of wiring. It's pretty complicated. But if that system was to fail, we would not be able to provide heat in the building. It is something that's going to have to be done when the heat system is not on, I believe. But it is, it's an essential element to our heating system at West Rutland.
And should provide energy savings in the future, correct?
Yes, absolutely. And that's why I do want to compliment Louis. We tried twice, as he mentioned, through Efficiency Vermont to get grant money for this. It sounded like a no-brainer, but we did not qualify on both rounds that we applied for this grant.
And this takes care of everything. Like, in two years, we need to do these four rooms because they weren't in this, you know what I mean?
Jay, did you hear that? So this should be the big project, final project, correct?
Yes. Yeah, to answer Tom's question, this is, this will bring everything back into, there are no rooms that are going to be outliers, Tom. This will control everything else that isn't controlled by the other Jace, the small one.
Number nine, the bidding thing, that could get scary because I remember I was trying to do an all-in the lunchroom and it'd be thousands of dollars. You know what I mean?
Are you on the bid specs? Is that what you're-
I'm not really sure the-
What, which one are we on? Alliance or-
Identifying any non-functional existing field control components?
That could, I mean, it's good, but basically every time we do something in West Rutland, it seems like it's, oh, yeah, this is, it just, it does.
And the point of that is, I mean, if we have, if we have stuff out there that's not working, we definitely want it to be pointed out to us because, I mean, that is, if we have an inefficient system. Yeah, it could add up.
Yeah, yeah, just wanted to point that out. No, we need it.
Those wouldn't necessarily be part of this project, depending on the size. I mean, if it's something, a small fix and it's gonna have-
So explain to us how this is cost-saving because-
It regulates the heating system because it can be controlled either by the principal or by the plant manager, so they can monitor-
It can't be controlled individually by the room?
Correct. We have a, the whole system is controlled by a computer, and we're able to tweak each and every room in live time. So we know exactly what the temperature is in a classroom at all times.
So Jay, does a teacher have an individual controller, or is that just you or Carl would have that controller?
It is just the office staff that has that control. The teachers have a thermostat, but it does not actually read. It does not give them the ability to turn up or down the temperature.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So the understanding is then this completes the project?
That is my understanding, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And so the only outstanding outlier for heating in West Rutland then is the second boiler that apparently continues to give us some problems as we see the expenditures on warrants?
Yes.
And the funding for this is coming from what, capital expenditures?
That would be my proposal, based on our discussions that we had a couple months ago.
And taking this out of capital expenditures, moves it down to what?
We had, that was in the packet a few months ago. I think we have six hundred and seventy thousand in that fund. Yep, six hundred and seventy. So that would bring it down to about five sixty, five, five fifty-seven.
Kristen?
Is there anything noticeable, or does anybody know anything about why there's a difference in the price for these two companies? Seems like kind of a big difference, but.
Uh, so the difference is about ten thousand dollars. So it's not too significant, I think, with a project this size. They are, they have access to different equipment, I believe would probably be one of the reasons.
And they're the current vendor.
One is our current vendor, so there may be a little bit of a discount included in there. I couldn't speak to that directly, but- Um, I couldn't speak to that directly, but, um, the, the bid specifications were written, and the bid that we received from Control Technologies would be the most compatible with our current system. Well, the bid specs were written so that it was com, um, uh, compatible with our current system and most identical, so that there wasn't two sets of controls that had to be read. Um, the fact that our current vendor is the low bidder, um, makes it, uh, ensures that that is the case, um, that they're using the same type of equipment, same compatibilities, same, so that Carl doesn't have to know two sets of heating controls.
Okay.
Thanks.
And did they, I, um, Alliance had a completion date. Did this, they have a completion date as well? Says we'll mutually agree upon the start and come, come...
Yeah, so we had talked about a completion date during the summer. Uh, we expected that this wasn't something that we were gonna do for this heating season. So we were looking at a completion, um, a completion date of, well, the bid specs has June first on it.
Okay. Kristen?
Just one more question for Jay. Do, are you pretty happy with the current, um, vendor that is, that we have, or do you have, would you like to see something different?
No, in my opinion, uh, the current vendor in the last four years has made some changes, um, in their management, and they are much more responsive, uh, of new people coming in, and they have actually corrected some serious issues that we had had in the past, uh, such as heating the gym, that no longer seem to be an issue. So, uh, no, my, my personal opinion is I'm very happy with this company and their response.
A motion will be in order to award Control Technologies the contract for a total of... Let me just have it. A hundred and thirteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars, with the funding to come from the capital improvement. Fund.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Kristen. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Alright, so the, the next item would be the FY twenty-four budget. Um, so the budget and the summary of changes was in the packet. There was a few changes since last month. Uh, so we had the updated assessments with the final approved GRCSU budget. Uh, that did result in a forty-two thousand dollar increase in special ed. Um, if you attended that meeting, um, the SU budget was approved at the last meeting. There was no change to central office budget, uh, since the last draft. Um, special ed budget did increase. Uh, one special educator was added to the budget, which did result in the increase that was spread across, um, the other di, all of the districts. Uh, so Cory Valley's portion was forty-two thousand dollars. Um, the special ed budget, e, after that increase, was still down, uh, I think it was a net a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars in assessment. Uh, vocational tuition, um, is also resulting in a, a pretty large increase. Um, we did receive their approved budget, um, since the last meeting, which is a tuition rate of nineteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars, which is a six-point-four-six percent increase. Uh, we also had an increase in the FTE count, um, which is the number of students. Uh, it's based on a six semester rolling average. Uh, so our current six, six semester rolling average is thirty-three point six seven. So the combination of both of those items is resulting in a hundred and forty-four thousand dollar increase in expense and a fifty-three thousand dollar increase in education spending. Uh, and the reason for that is that a portion of it, the vocational is broken out into two pieces. The first piece is what they call the on-behalf payment. It's eighty-seven percent of the total tuition is paid by, directly by the state to the vocational center. Uh, so there's a, an expense, and then there's an offsetting revenue. And then the other piece is, um, that you take, so eighty-seven percent, it's actually eighty-seven, not eighty-seven percent of the total tuition, it's eighty-seven percent of the base education amount, which, for this year, was twelve thousand, five hundred and one dollars. So the remaining piece after that is deducted, uh, which would be our portion, is nine thousand, eighty-four dollars per FTE. Um, a, and that portion, um, goes into our expense line. So that's, that's the reason between the hundred and fifty, or the hundred and forty-four thousand dollars and the fifty-three thousand dollars. Um, and then, uh, the last change was, uh, updates the, the personnel changes that were discussed in executive session, um, at the November meeting. So right now, current expense is up by four point one four percent. Uh, educational spending is up two point, uh, one percent, two point, two percent, I believe it is. Two point zero four percent. Um, I was hoping to have CLA data today. Unfortunately, it has not come in. It's usually due out December fifteenth. I'm hoping to have it any day now. That's really the, the big final piece that we're waiting for. Uh, so I did plug some of the information into the tax rate calculation, so that we can kinda see, based on the budget that I have in front of you today, um, how it would impact the tax rate. So the first piece is looking at education spending, which is up by two point zero four percent. This does not take into account putting anything into a reserve fund, so we'll need to talk about that, um, after this discussion. Uh, so anything that we do on, on that side would, would impact this as well. Uh, we then take our equalized pupils. Uh, right now, we only have a preliminary number, uh, which is, um, off by about a half a percent. Uh, we take education spending divided by equalized pupil to get our spending per pupil, which is currently estimated to be seventeen thousand, three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And then we divide it by the yield. Uh, the yield is the number that the state gives us. The legislators decide that in April or May, uh, based on the, the state of the education fund and budgets. Uh, right now, I'm using the tax commissioner's recommendation. Uh, if anyone saw his letter on December first, his recommendation was a yield of fifteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars, uh, and that's based on a couple factors. The first being that there is a sixty-three or sixty-four million dollar surplus in the ed fund. Um, so this yield estimate is using all of that surplus on reduce, or increasing the yield and reducing local tax rates. We don't know if that's what'll actually happen until the legislators start to, to meet and decide whether they wanna use that full yield on that, or whether they want a portion of that yield, or a portion of that surplus to go towards other priorities, such as, we know last year, there was a approximately a hundred million dollar surplus. Uh, about a third of it went to increasing the yield, a third of it went to, uh, Universal Meals, and then another third went to other miscellaneous projects. So at this point, we know Universal Meals was a one-year commitment. We don't know if that will continue and how that'll be funded, but if they continue that another year with surplus funds, that would be approximately thirty million dollars. Um, at this time, using, in the calculation, I'm, I'm using the full amount, um, because that was the tax commissioner's recommendation, and that's really the only information we have to go by at this time. So using that full amount, it gives us a unified tax rate of a dollar twelve, which is an eleven point, eleven point seven percent decrease in the unified rate. Um, the next step would be to apply the common level of appraisal. As I mentioned, that we don't have those numbers at this time, um, but we know that's going to be the other big significant factor, because we ha, home prices have, um, increased over the, the last few, CLA is based on a three-year average, uh, and so when, when home prices are above fair market, when fair market value is above assessed value, it decreases the CLA and drives up ho, um, tax rates. We know the last few years have been pretty, um, pretty high home prices, above assessed value, so we, we would anticipate that the CLA is going to decrease. We just don't know how much at this time. So leaving CLA flat at this time, which I don't think is going to be the case, and using the full yield, we're looking at an eleven point seven percent decrease in tax rates, based on this budget.
Okay. Questions for Louis? Okay, I'm guessing that's the extent of the conversation, that the rest of it'll be for executive session?
Um, well, do we wanna talk about capital improvements and surplus right now, or...
Sure. Do we have that, those numbers? I didn't see that in my, in my packet.
There's nothing, no, it's just a matter of the board deciding if they wanna use any of that surplus towards capital improvements, and then, if so, how much. Um, we don't need to decide that at this meeting. We can wait until the next meeting and see...
Okay, why don't we do that, and you could...
If we have better CLA numbers.
Yeah, and could you provide the, what's in there now? What we're taking out for West, for the, um, what we just approved?
Jace.
For the Jace? And then what we have to put in? What our, what our option is? And we would have to warn it again, correct?
We would have to have an item on the ballot, um, and we can do it as a flat amount, we can do it as a percentage.
Yeah.
Um, I think if we should adjust the language to possibly be able to do it...
So we don't have to do it every year?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. Alright, so let's do that, and maybe you could, um, have, uh, draft langy, whoo, draft language from Chris Leopold, uh, for the next meeting also then? 'Cause without the numbers, I think it's hard sometimes to, to really see what we're looking at. Alright? And that'll make a more cohesive conversation. Alright, and we'll save the rest of Louis for executive session. Contract recommendations, sports staff. Arlen Ledworth, uh, library para, long-term sub, Proctor High. Extra curricular, Ethan Cameron Vopel, Poltoni Elementary, three, four boys basketball coach. Joey Parker, Proctor Elementary, five, six, basket, boys basketball coach. Beth Winter, Poltoni High School, senior class co-advisor. Kimberly Handley, Poltoni High School, senior class co-advisor. Jamie Malazo, Poltoni High School, junior class advisor. Joanna Decow, Poltoni High School, licensing board member. And Catherine Mahoney, Poltoni Elementary, licensing board member. A motion would be in order to approve the contract recommendations as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Kristen. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We have one retirement in front of us. Lori Sereni, Proctor Elementary, administrative assistant, effective at the end of the FY twenty-three school year. A motion would be in order to accept the retirement of Lori Sereni.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mike. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. You also have just informational, in your packet, of retirement resignations to date. I have two of these. Alright, policies. Oh, my favorite, policies. G-four, selection of library material, second read. H-three, advertising in schools, public solicitation, student fundraising, second read. A motion would be in order to approve the two second read policies.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Kristen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. D-eleven, public complaints about personnel, first read. E-eight, naxal administration for opiate overdose, first read. F-twenty-six, students who are homeless, first read. And H-two, community use of school facilities, first read. Uh, future meeting date, you'll see that we moved, um, our meeting date to the seventeenth, as the sixteenth is Martin Luther King. Uh, future agenda items, you can send those to Chris or, um, myself or Christine. And a motion would be in order to, for executive session for personnel contracts and the negotiating or securing of a real estate purchase or lease option.
No question. I got an A-one, uh, policy. Is that just an accident?
Yeah, A-one was...
Yeah.
A-one? Okay.
Thank you.
Just keep it in your, in your tapes.
Yep.
Alright, a motion will be in order to go in executive session at summon eleven.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Kristen. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, well, um...